Work sessions, September 27th, 2023. First up is Consumers Energy, Rick Castle, Rich Castle, excuse me. Please turn your mic on and identify yourself.
Thank you. All right. Good morning. Can you hear me okay? All right, I'm Rich Castle. I'm the Community Affairs Manager at Consumers Energy for Northeast Michigan. So I've been here, I think, a time or two in the past just to represent the EDC or my role on the EDC. So I'm here today to talk about our Houghton Lake reliability project. This project is geared towards making our electric system on the South Shore of Houghton Lake more reliable for all of our customers. And we've done a number of reliability projects in the county in the last couple of years. I'll just list a couple of them, but our Higgins substation, which is just south here of Roscommon on M18, that is the main substation that feeds the entire county. And so we've totally rebuilt that entire substation. We've also done some work at our Gareish substation and then we did a good chunk of our distribution system over in Lyons Township on the west and the north side of Higgins Lake. And then also where we're in the process of redoing or updating our Beaver Creek substation up on Four Mile Road in Crawford County. So we've been investing a lot of time and a lot of energy and money into making our electric system in this area more reliable. And that's something that our customers asked us to do, and that's what we're looking to do. So this Houghton Lake project in particular is to retire the current Houghton Heights substation and then build a new substation, which will be on the corner of Nap Road and Old 27. Also, a part of that is to retire the Marquee line. The Marquee line is one of our high voltage distribution lines that runs on the north side of Houghton Lake and then comes down on the west side through the huge wetland area and then goes into that substation on the South Shore. So with that, we have to build a new HVD line. And that new HVD line, we have proposed running from the new proposed substation down along Old 27 to Emery Road and then Emery Road to Reserve Road and then Reserve Road down to Waco Road and across M18 over to the ITC 345 KV line, which runs along the east side of the county. And so we are putting that new line in to make a more reliable feed into that substation, which obviously provides more reliable power to our customers. The main goal with the route was twofold. Number one, we take, we've taken our environmental and wetlands all into consideration. And then we've taken in the development on the South Shore into consideration as well. And why that's important is, is we are kind of restricted somewhat by both. We don't have a lot of locations for flexibility and where to put the line. And so when we've chosen this route, we've taken all of that into consideration. The other part of that is, is we want to make sure that the line is better accessible, meaning we want to be able to put that along the roads and the road right away. So if we do have a power outage, if we do have an issue, we can easily access that line. That is one of the issues with the marking line that we currently can't do in most of those places due to the wetlands. So with that, you know, that's the route that we had originally proposed or that we are proposing now. We did have an issue with the original route going down Tower Line Road. From what I understand is there was an issue with the survey along that road, meaning the road is not located where it's supposed to be in the sense of, you know, with the way the survey was developed. And so that forced us to have to redesign which, you know, our route to be able to take, to be able to get over to Waco Road. And so that is the, the reason why there was the change to Old 27 and going across Emery Road. So again, just, you know, we're, we're encountering some limited circumstances that place this where it needs to be. This is going to be a line that is basically a dual pole situation, meaning HVD line will be on the top end of the pole. The distribution will be on the middle part of the pole. So we're trying to maximize the right of way that we have available to us. So in some cases, you'll have like a high voltage distribution and larger tower separate from the distribution. In this case, it will be a combined dual purpose pole situation. So I'm not sure if you have any questions, but I did want to be able to make mention of this to you guys and just give you an update of where everything is. And I will say that Consumers Energy has been meeting with Denton Township and Roscommon Township and the supervisors about this, trying to be as transparent as possible. We've attended a Roscommon Township Board meeting a year ago to, you know, explain the project, what we were looking to do, also providing information about how, you know, our customers and local individuals can get in contact with Consumers Energy. You know, we've been working with our landowners and working with them specifically as it pertains to their property being a part of the project. So we've been about as transparent about this as possible in that local area. So we're just trying to work through this. And so again, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I believe this is concerning the issues that we had with.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. Do you want to ask some questions first, Mr. Chair?
No, bud.
Okay, I have some questions. I believe this is concerning the residents that came in a while back. And you guys had made provisions to look through going through the wetlands instead of going through private residential areas and disturbing their environment. Is this, this is the folks you brought in on this? Have you guys gone to Eagle and asked him for permission?
We, we've not made any decisions to about going through wetlands. And when we do go through the wetlands, we will be working with Eagle, working with all of the local units that we have to when it, when it comes to getting permitting to go through, you know, any that we decide to go.
That doesn't answer my question. We, we had a lot of residents in here that were very, very upset. Okay, that you guys are going to be going down and ruining their right of ways and taking a lot of space out there when you could go over to wetlands. What I'm asking is, did you go to, did you go to the DNR?
It's part of the process right now. So we are working with the DNR in the state of Michigan on lands that they own on the west or on the east end of the project. But when we do go through the process, we will be working with those governmental agencies or permitting agencies that we have to go.
It's not finalized yet, is what you're saying. Okay. Well, I can tell you, we had a lot of people in here that were really, really upset about it. And there's been some recent federal cases I know involving wetlands. I, I can't see dropping some poles in wetlands as being that big of an issue. And I, and I believe it's even shorter distance, isn't it?
Well, we're taking the approach that we prefer not to be in the wetland areas. And the main reason is, is it comes down to access. If, you know, one of the issues that we have currently with the Marquee line is if we have an outage where that line is in the wetland area, it takes a lot of resources and work to be able to get into that area, which prolongs an outage. So what we're looking to do is just try to eliminate being in the wetland areas for one main reason, and it's, it's the environmental aspect of it. The other part of it is, is from an access standpoint.
But totally ruining some people's homes and residences by, by destroying a right of way when you could go through. So I, I mean, just be realistic. It really, I really hope you guys go to, to look at that. I don't know if anybody is here today that, okay, is going to be here on that. But, but I really believe you need to take a more serious look at that. Go to Eagle, drop them poles down in the ground. It's not going to disturb the wetlands. It's not going to make that big of a deal, not any, not any worse than you. I mean, you're, you're, you're in the process of ruining people's residences.
I, I appreciate your comments and I'll take that back to our project team. And, you know, we'll, we'll work with the permitting agencies and we'll, we'll figure out how that will work, you know, based on the route that we have and we'll, we'll figure that out. So.
That'd be great. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but, but I think I know how I feel about it.
I'll be quick. Some of the folks that I represent have offered an alternative plan, an alternative plan. I hope that you take that into consideration because it's very, very important that their voice be heard. I understand there's quite a few residents concerned. I want to make sure that that's, that's being done. I know that you're being transparent and I appreciate that. In favor, keep us up to date because I want to make sure that the folks that I represent, their voices are heard and that their, their, their thoughts and considerations are taken into perspective.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
You know, I know it's a tough deal to come and get grilled. What I'm hearing, and I might be wrong, is there's an alternative route that was looked at and considerations were taken in, and this is the route decided. I'm hearing that perhaps that's a financial consideration taken in, but there's also a human consideration that needs to be taken in by taking the route along Emery Road. That's my comment. The other thing is, are there any known health effects for residents that will be living underneath this high power line?
Your question.
Are there any known health effects that can occur because residents are living underneath this high power line?
I'm not aware of any. So I, and I can't answer that question specifically, but I'm not aware of any at this time. But I can tell you is, is we are on the alternative route currently, meaning our original route, as I said before, did not, you know, work out from the survey aspect. So this was the alternative route and that's where we are currently.
But that wasn't the eternal, there's an alternative to go down through state lands, is there not?
Again, sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's an alternate route of going down through state land where there's less residents?
You know, I.
I know you're not the engineer in the project.
Understood. So, you know, right now we're working with the route that we have currently. My engineering team, you know, they may have looked at it, but right now this is the route that we're looking.
I just asked you to take into consideration the human aspect of this.
And I think it's been looked at if it's a viable option. And I don't have an answer for you whether or not that's been taken seriously. But, you know, this is the route that we're moving forward on because it provides the most reliable, you know, route possible to be able to serve our customers.
Yes, sir. Yeah. While that may be the environmental aspect, I'm kind of concerned about the financial aspect. Is this going to increase the property values of these people's homes? I, I don't think it will. And are you prepared to compensate them for that, for their, for their losses in the property reduction values? And when you look at all of that, I think you really need to seriously look at that alternative route because that, that's something that might be coming down around and it might be a, a legal problem for you folks who you're going to have to deal with down the road.
Well, understood. My, our land agent was supposed to be here this morning and would have been able to maybe better answer this question. But as part of the process to be able to work with landowners and securing the rights to be able to use their property, that's all taken into consideration as part of that process.
Last, last one. And I do appreciate you being here, Rich. A recommendation I'm sure you've done already, but again, another recommendation. Sit down with Jim and his folks, come up with a compromise that would be workable for them. It's very, very important that we, the human, human issue is taken care of. Take your time, Bill.
I appreciate it. I'll just say, you know, Jim and I have spoken. You know, I'm, I'm kind of, as I, as I sit here with you guys, I'm the liaison for anybody from here to our, our company. And so the same to them, and I've been able to relay that information. And so I just wanted you guys to know that, you know, we're working through it. We're, we're trying to, you know, serve our customers and make the, the electric system the most reliable that it can be. And so that's why I'm here today is just to be able to be as transparent about what we're looking to, you know, looking to achieve. And so as always, if you have any questions, anytime, and still hesitate to reach out. But.
Thank you, Rich.
They got my support. I'm just hoping I can be yours.
Thank you. I realize you're the liaison and I appreciate the emails we get from.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. See you tomorrow. Economic Development, eight o'clock.
Treasures 2021 foreclosure report, Rebecca.
Good morning. As part of the new foreclosure law that came out in 2020, there's this new report that I have to do. And it may seem strange that it's like two years ago. We're reporting what happened two years ago, but that's the way they wanted it. I had Rex come to me with a question and I really appreciated that this morning. And his question was, he calculated my numbers and he took the amount that was sold and then it says 5%. The county gets to retain 5%. What this doesn't explain is the 5% is only off of those properties that the resident has filled out the intent to collect the overage. So it's not 5% on the amount that we made. It's only on those properties and there was three that year. So it didn't, it didn't add up to him. And I appreciate him actually looking at this, doing the math and, and asking questions. So is there anybody else that has any question?
What is the math? In other words, how much was the overage that was collected that, that should have been given to the property owners? And how much did they apply for?
I think it was about $33,000.
It's right here in your last item. You have a report.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
$12,97, yeah.
Sign your laptop.
Then they have to go to the judge in a hearing and then he has to say, yes, this is the amount that is over. Because there may be a mortgage company or somebody who has a lien on the property, excuse me, that would want part of that overage on that property. So I don't make that decision. The judge does. I also gave you a pamphlet and this is something that my staff and I have created. And this is the tax process because since it has changed, a lot of people are confused. And so I made a pamphlet and it explains rate from, starting with summer, winter, rate to delinquent, forfeiture and foreclosure. Now, a lot of people get forfeiture and foreclosure confused because they sound so much alike, but they're actually one year apart. Forfeiture means we're getting ready to foreclose. The process starts of a title search and extra fees are added because of these extra duties that we have to do to make sure that the property is ready to foreclose. Those are available at my office and I'm going to be putting it online also on the treasure site.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I know you've got a large agenda here. So if there are any questions, and if not, my door's always open. Come talk.
Thank you very much. Fair Housing Contact Person, Jody Bell.
So a couple of weeks ago, our contracted housing director that we have through Crawford County, Hannah Laura Dicinger contacted me and asked if I could please locate for her the Roscommon County Fair Housing Resolution that was passed, naming the individual who represents Roscommon County on that. I dug through my files, old housing files, and the clerk's staff dug back to 1980 in the minutes. And we were unable to locate at that point a fair housing resolution that is required in order for us to continue with the processes that we have in place. So what I am recommending to you, based on the fact that Hannah is the one that has all of the required training and knowledge regarding fair housing, is that the fair housing resolution named the housing director of the Roscommon County Housing Department as your fair housing director at this point in time. And then that will make us compliant and we'll be able to continue to have this contracted service where we can apply for this funds through the federal government.
Any questions? Thank you, Jody. Number four, Board of Canvassers appointment recommendations, Michelle.
Good morning. So every odd number of year, we have, not we, you have the responsibility to appoint representatives to the Board of Canvassers, one from the Republican Party, one from the Democrat Party. And so the process is each year in the summer, usually August, the Bureau of Elections says it's time to reach out and get the names. So then I send a letter to each of the parties, asking them for three names. And very rarely do I ever get three names. So I have, from the Republican Party, I received two names. One person was not eligible because they are currently holding an elected position. So you have a letter from Paul Mangini requesting to be appointed. The Democratic Party, I did reach back out to them multiple times. They have a meeting coming up this week. So the chairperson for the party will hopefully have a name. So I'm going to have to come back to you again in two weeks, hopefully with a name for that party to be appointed. But the terms for this, it's a four-year term and the term begins on November 1st of 2023 for this one and expires October 31st of 2027. So they stagger the appointments. There's only four people on the Board of Canvassers, but they, so they stagger it. And every, every two years you're doing appointments unless there's a vacancy. Any questions?
Questions? Question marks? Thank you, Michelle.
Great. Thanks.
Number five, 2024 wage increases, discussion of the whole. Jody, would you like to kick that off?
So back at the first meeting in September, you were presented information by the Wage and Salary Committee and their recommendations. I know that you've seen the policy, but I'll do a quick, quick reminder to everybody of how the process works. So there is a committee that's appointed by the Board of Commissioners of employees and elected officials. And they are tasked with, under the policy, to review current wage scales for Roscommon County and compare those to counties that are comparable to Roscommon County. So you are not going to Genesee County and seeing how much does a clerk make there. It's utilizing northern Michigan-based counties, those with similar SEBs and populations as our own. So in that information, they review and then make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on what they believe is a needed adjustment in order to keep us kind of mid-level for wages. Therefore, they asked for a 10%, which while looking at the data, it makes sense, is not economically feasible for our budgets. So that being said, it's up to the Board of Commissioners to make a suggestion for me to have as a goal in the budget. You are not making a motion. You do not need to make the motions until we get to the point where you're ready to approve the budget because obviously you're telling me, hey, we'd like to see a 5% increase for the non-union staff in the next budget cycle coming up. Can we make that happen? We go through, we had all the data together. I gather all the data. And we look to see, does that fit within our current revenue structures? If the answer is yes, then you guys approve it as a motion. If the answer is no, then you're looking to decide, you know, how is that going toward? So basically what I need from you today is a general consensus. We were running a little bit behind and that's more because I think I was sick at the September 10th. So a lot of this didn't get explained as well. So we have sent out, I have sent out the budget sheets, worksheets and wage infringement worksheets to our department heads with a 3% based on one or two conversations I've had with a couple of different commissioners. That is not set in stone. They all know that's not set in stone. That was just to get the process rolling. But it is up to, it is up to you to, to make that determination of where you would, what is your goal? What would you like to see happen so that then we can have those finalized numbers in there?
Is that about 5% increase? Is that per year, per five years?
It would be just for one year.
The 5% was just like a, hey, if that's, they asked for 10. 10 is hardly not feasible. I will remind you that last year, the non-union did not receive a pay increase or a step of any kind. We were doing major cuts, so it didn't seem right. Tried to figure that in. My thought was to try for a 3%. I say try because until we get that totality of the revenues and, you know, how do we know that we don't have some major, major purchases for our building? That doesn't need to happen next year, those types of things. But ideally, that would be, that would be where you would go, is to give me a recommendation to try to aim for. So.
Maybe I'm a little confused because last week when we had the union in, we were talking about a 1% plus 1%. We were talking about a 2%, we were arguing over the 1%. So I, I'm trying to see what kind of, maybe you can explain to me why there's such a.
Difference?
Why, yeah, big difference.
So a couple, couple differences. Obviously, union, non-union is going to make it huge. Last year, the union did receive a 1%. They do not pay into the 5% for the insurance.
How much is that usually?
5%. I guess it depends on who it is. For myself, with a two-person, I pay like 37 a pay period. So to have it come out for a family, you're going to pay around like 60 or 70. 5%. We pay 5% of the total premium, non-unions do.
Okay.
Insurance.
Insurance, yes.
That gets paid for.
Union pays, we pay everything for the.
It's always been that way.
Since we started doing this, yes, sir.
Okay. So, so then we get back to apples to apples. You got a 1%. They're asking, we're offering the union 1%. They're asking for 2%. And we're coming back now for non-union 3%. And we're talking 5% and coming back with.
I'm not talking 5%.
I mean, you're just, we're throwing some, we're just throwing, we're brainstorming.
So I'll put it this way. So last year, the union had 1%, non-union had 0%.
Okay.
This year, if the union gets 2%, that makes 3% for them.
Oh, for a reason.
And non-union got it last year, which would make the percentages equal. But non-union are still paying out of their paycheck, which means they're still down a little bit on that.
They're still paying for the benefits.
Insurance to, for the union, we're still going to, they'll still have a little bit more reduction in wages.
Right, but they also haven't been paid for the last year either.
No, the union has.
Not, not, right, right, right.
Yeah, our non-union have paid for the last six or seven years.
Correct. But what I'm saying is, it's a yearly contract with.
No, no, no. Our union has a five-year contract that we are currently entered into. So they negotiated for wages.
So last year, they got no increase.
1, 1, 1.
The union did. But non-union did not.
Non-union did not, which is why I said, so basically if you look at it, you, going back to your premise, let's say that this board decides that they only want to, they'll accept the POAMs with the contract at 1% and counter that back to the command officers. Then your union over the last two years will have had a 2% raise for 23, 24.
So to make it even, okay, if we gave police their 1% plus 1%, 2% and we gave 3% on the other, okay, then they're equal.
That's right.
Okay.
Correct.
And we shouldn't have a problem with the police.
There's a 5% of insurance cost to enter into that figure.
Correct. I'll let you guys argue with this.
That's always been there.
I mean, I'd also like to point out.
That is correct. Then the percentage ranges would be equal. Yes.
It's always been there.
I'd also like to point out, we have not counter offered the union at this point yet.
I understand. We're waiting here. We're, we're going to be talking about that in the next.
That's the next meeting. And there's more into it than just 1%.
This, we're talking about this at 1:10, correct, Jody?
Correct.
Yeah. What I would like to recommend to Jody is for non-union, let's go in and see what we can come up with at 3%. And if it has to be two or one or whatever, but let's give her a starting base.
I agree with you. I agree with that.
For a starting base.
Yep.
You know, we need a starting base and I think that's a good starting base for non-union police.
Okay, well, to me, it looks like the 1% 1% for the police is the ending base then.
Well, this is the starting base for non-union and that's what she needs right now.
So if we weren't somewhere, yeah, we weren't changing the insurance, all that your contracted employees, your union contracted employees would have is what they negotiated for. And that's, they negotiated for that.
But that's.
The union did.
Union did, right.
Yes.
Well, they, well, they're, they're asking for 1% plus 1%. Or that's what they're negotiating.
One union's asking for that.
Okay.
Yeah. The other union's not because they're looking at things from a different perspective.
Okay.
Best way I can put it.
But for non-union, I think we should, you know, authorize Jody to start with a 3%, you know, and see what she comes up with.
I, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I just want to understand.
Yeah. To me, this is, this is two different arguments. So where you're going to go, and I know exactly where you're going, save that for the union.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to hear Mark chime in on.
Yeah, I just.
Non-union.
I mean, I'm in favor of the increase. It won't destroy the budget.
And that's part we have to see, Mark.
That's, that's the summary that I'm looking for. And I'm looking for the professionals such as the treasurer, the well, Jody, the department heads to give us their best, their best input. That's the recommendation I'm going to go with. At the end of the day, want to make sure that our budget, that our wish are taken care of, the best. to make sure that our budget, that our employees are taking care of the best they can. We respect their demands and requests, we also don't destroy the budget. I think something people don't remember, don't, once you get a pay raise, it goes in perpetuity, it goes on forever and ever, it never goes away. It's not 3%, one year, and it goes back, it doesn't revert, it continues. 1% increase is about, anybody help me out here, I'm going to shoot from the hip, right around $70,000, $75,000 from the budget, 1% increase. 1% is about 70 grand, am I right?
That's about right.
So 1%, so you're talking 3%, you're talking roughly $210,000. But it doesn't seem like very much 1% or 2% or 3%, but when you look at over a period of time, $210,000 goes on forever and ever. That's how I'm going to look at it. Whatever, whatever the recommendations are based on the fact that we don't destroy our budget, that's what I'm going to go with.
Thank you, Mark.
I absolutely think we have to look at, but we also have to remember inflation. Last year, inflation went up 8%. That goes on forever and ever, and we get another 3% this year, that goes on forever and ever. You know, our folks have to be taken care of. And if we got to, and, and, and what it boils down to is, we, we need to keep as many people, we're not an employment agency, okay? And, and I don't, I don't want to come off harsh or anything like, but, but we have to be able to attract people here. We, you know, we want to keep the best top-notch people that we can, and we have to pay them. We have to pay them.
And I hear, I hear your concern, but the thing is, we can't run out of money.
That's right.
Can't print money, we can't raise an army, we, we're not like the federal government. We have to maintain our budget. That's our primary goal as commissioners, is maintain our budget. It's our primary goal, yeah.
Traditionally, my philosophy since I've been here and what I have received from the Board of Commissioners is very similar to what Commissioner Austin is saying. We're looking at paying a, I call it like a mid-range pay and excellent benefits, so that we can not only attract better people, because when you work for government, you're traditionally doing a lot of multi-trusting, cross, cross-training type of functions. But we want to retain those people that have that knowledge as well.
You're absolutely correct. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you very much, that was a good, good
Just stay right aboard, Jody, for number six, the mileage. No, excuse me. I just, start that one off.
That's Commissioner Wolfson.
Okay, well, to have no name, it said discussion of the whole, and I don't have a clue. Right, well, you weren't on the wage increase either.
He's dumping it on me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought we were doing this in the next meeting, but I had a chance to talk with the controller, taking into consideration how we can relieve the budget, because I think we're going to be of real financial desire, dire needs. And, and we talked as a board about going for millages. I think we need to go for, and this is my thought, you know, like to hear from others, we need to go for a line item type mileage, and something that is a big budget item, and most likely is going to have some cut if we have to make cuts again this year. And also, we have to take into consideration will the public support that. And there's not a lot of options out there on that one.
I like the line item. I mean, I think that makes a lot of, makes a lot of sense, and the people know that it's going for that specific thing.
Yep.
Supposed to go into the general fund, and then much more likely to get it passed.
I mean, at this point, I'm not ready to recommend which line item. Commissioner Sensor is working with a group and trying to arrange meetings to get their input on that one. And until that information's all gathered in, we're not taking a high, a hard stand on what line item we consider.
Well, we have like three of them.
But it has to be one that will relieve the budget, because that's where we're going to come into problems, is with the budget. It's not, I don't think the public is going to support expanding any.
Like?
I don't think they're going to, I don't think it's, the public wants to vote in more mileage for us to add more money to a department or to add some other project or service to the system.
Well, if it's, if it's by line item, that's a decision they'll make.
That's right.
Right, but if you, if, if, if you don't think the public's going to support a thing, then we shouldn't ask for it.
Well.
You know, I, I realize we have to ask for something. Right now, we're still exploring what.
You know, you can't give anything if you don't ask for it either, so.
That's right.
That's correct.
I would like to see something on there, and I want to jump in for MSU for line item support. Some of their funding, bring back some of the projects that they offered.
And, and that's adding a project, that's not relieving the budget.
Right, but we need to look forward also.
Does that take it off of the budget?
It's already off.
It's off the budget. We had, we had to take it on last year.
I'm sorry, I'm going to speak into the mic so Julie doesn't beat me up publicly in the outside, in the antrum. I, I would really like to see an EDC Economic Development Corporation committee line item mileage request, because I know that right now, Jody, I hate to ask a question, I don't know the answer. What do, what do we spend in EDC a year roughly?
We don't spend anything on EDC anymore. We got rid of them last year.
Perfect.
They are sold by themselves. I will add that we currently have 4H continuing in our county through the grace of Michigan State University, allowing for full coverage of that. That is not a program, it's roughly 50,000 to continue that program next year. That is not 50,000 we're going to have. I can tell you that right now. So we will, while we will continue to have those services that MSU provides to counties across the board, Julie, Julie's back there. We will not have the support staff on site as far as like additional secretarial or a 4H program. So that's something that would be, it's going away, we're not paying for it now. And that, to me, is kind of a public question, is do, do they feel that's important? But I think, Commissioner Wolfson, I think what you're getting at is, what can we carve out of our existing budget that we need that would be supported by the public, not add a new mileage on for a new service? Is that where you were going?
Well, I thought the whole object here was knowing we're going to have budget problems and, you know, asking the voters for help with their budget. And if, if we're just putting in new programs or reinstalling old programs, that's no longer coming out of the budget, the budget has gained nothing.
But there again, we had to delete some of the stuff last year. And is it fair that we deleted this? But we can't delete this because it has to be there.
I, I think we're going to be in a position where we're going to delete more if we don't relieve the budget somehow.
We're only limited, we're only limited to only leaving so much, and we got to keep the rest.
Our, our job is to provide services. I hear what Rex is saying. I'm going off my memory now, so kind of work with me in this regard. A few years ago, when we had the mileage for the veterans, put that together, I think it took about $30,000 a year from the general fund budget. We went with the mileage. Now I think we capture a close to a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'm not going to know exactly. The kicker is, now we have one of the finest veteran services in the state of Michigan, and we really, and we relieve the budget of $30,000. So I, we, we end up developing a better program and also blessing of the county budget. We can do that with other services, I think that's what we should do.
And it's, it'd be a big win-win for us and the services out there, because they could grow.
Pretty hard, Mr. Chairman, how hard is it to, to separate those items out? Is that a fairly easy thing to do?
Depending on exactly, I was going to say, eventually, we're going to have to let Commissioner Sensor speak, because she's got lots of information for you guys, and she can actually answer that question. She's done a lot of work recently.
Asking a question to the wrong person, then
Yes, you are. He's been very busy.
Well, we all got this packet that talked about the Headley restoration, and in there it said the Roscommon County General Operating Millage Restoration, and it lists all of our services. So, as I agree with MSU, I understand what you're saying with economic development. However, our first main goal is to make sure that we have enough money to operate, able to keep the employees that we have without laying anybody off. And if we don't pick something out of this list that is going to help relieve that budget in some way, shape, or form, we are going to be in serious trouble. Plain and simple, there's no way around it. We don't grow money on trees, we've got to find a way to do it. And I think the more you put on, on the next election, it's going to be harder and harder to get certain things passed. And let's say the MSU thing passes, that's wonderful, I do agree that 4H and other things, but that doesn't help relieve the budget in any way, shape, and or form.
Well, true.
And so if that passes, but something else, because we had so many things on there, doesn't pass. And what we did is we basically added a service back in and did nothing. And I thought our main goal here was to look at the budget and determine how we can make things work.
I agree with you 100% Caroline, but we also have to look at the whole picture with the other people in the county out there, you know. If we take away a service next year, like from MSU, the people that use it, they're going to be pissed, and they're not going to support one of ours.
But in a way, people did speak, because they had the Headley restoration.
Everything.
I understand that. But we listed what things were not going, what things could possibly be cut if this did not pass. And the people spoke, it didn't pass.
And that's how come I like the line items versus a big clunk, because there might be 10 things in that big clunk, they don't only want one of them. So they're not going to support all 10 for one. Thanks for notes.
Jody, what do you thought, Sheriff, truly, what are your thoughts on, on what Caroline just went over?
I agree with Commissioner Sensor 100%. We have, it's a double-edged sword, because we need, we need assistance with doing statutory duties. We have, and I will tell you that the biggest, the biggest areas, obviously, that we see this increase are affected by changes at the state level. There's people that can speak a little bit more intelligently about it than me, but essentially, criminals are no longer criminals, drunk drivers are no longer drunk drivers. You're faced with not having a penalty anymore. So, for instance, a sheriff's deputy could arrest somebody, they could be convicted of a certain crime. And before, where we used to be able to say, okay, you're not going to pay your fines and fees, so therefore, your driver's license is suspended. So now you've got your carrot, we can't do that anymore. So now what you have to do is you have to show cause them. That's more work for the courts, more work for the judge, more work for your sheriff's office. The number of jailable crimes, because they have redone the sentencing guidelines, basically, has dropped drastically. So we're not looking so much as all of our expenses have gone up so drastically. What we're looking at this year is the revenue, just talking and accounting terms of revenues. So the fees for services are no longer existence for public safety anymore. That being said, that is where I believe that Commissioner Sensor is absolutely correct, looking for something within the general funds budget that we could specifically ask line item, hey, we pay X amount to the childcare fund every year. Would you be willing, you know, would they be willing to offset? We pay X amount for jail services as far as taking care of inmates, running the building maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, every year. Those would be the things that we would need to go out and ask. With that being said, that's a short-term solution. Those are statutory. So if for some reason the mileage fails, we still have to pay for it. That's our job.
One of the things that I'm really concerned with, and I was talking to Michelle Stevenson the other day, and, and I believe it's a statutory service on the election, new election rules. We're going to be spending a lot more money on elections, because they have early voting, got to have two people in there for nine days, I believe. I think, three, three people. Michelle, can, maybe you can explain a little bit about what you and I talked about the other day, on the increased expenses, on what's going to be coming down, and, you know, the stress that it's going to put on our budget.
Well, the election inspectors are going to be covered by the township. So our townships themselves are going to be incurring extensive costs.
Not a county expense.
Well, the county provides, we're required to provide the ballots. So there are certain things that the county is required to provide. So with the changes with election and regarding elections with early voting, and people can now request a ballot be mailed to them for every election, rather than the application, because the previous AV process was they would get an application for every election, and then they would have to complete that application and submit it to get a ballot. Now, we can, they have, we have to send them an application, and there's a box on there that they can check that they want a ballot sent to them automatically for every election. So I'm going to have to order at least 100% on ballots for every election, where in the past, I could, I could say, okay, this has been the turnout, so this is what I'll order. You know, small, special elections, we might have a 10%, 15% turnout. So I'm going to order 20, 25% for ballots. I can't do that anymore, I've got to order. And ballots are, well, they used to be about 35, 36 cents a ballot. And if I'm ordering 20,000 ballots multiple times a year, on the, depending on the election year. So there's going to be increased costs, yes. I'm going to still, I still do election certification training, election inspector certifications, we have our canvassers, we're going to have to have multiple visits with our Board of Canvassers, because now ballots that are postmarked on election day have up until six days to reach us. So our canvassers aren't able to certify elections two days after the election as they used to be able to, unless there was provisional ballots out there. Now they're going to come in, because we have to buy statutes, start the canvas by 9:00 AM on the Thursday following the election. So I'm going to have to have those canvassers come back a second time to pay them for that. So, and then that's just, there's no other. So there's going to be increased cost across the board. The townships are going to be hit the hardest with that.
Then you have mileage and all that, because now you're going to have to drive to them, townships, not just once, maybe two or three times to do your inspections.
And that's, and that's one of our statutory responsibilities that, that are in the general budget.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Michelle. So basically, you're saying, going to come up with suggestions for us, like you, Rex, the committee would like to see go on, or line item.
I think each of us should kind of, and then talk amongst, and figure out exactly where we're at. But I know that we need to do this in a certain timely fashion, because we have to have everything, I believe, to Michelle by December 5th, all the wording and everything.
Let's put this on in our work session, so we can nail it down in two weeks. Okay?
Is that going to be enough time, Charlie?
I think it should be. I mean, each of us
And your list is in our packet here today?
Oh, you have it.
No.
We had prior to today's meeting.
This was in last week's packet.
Okay.
And if you go through and just kind of maybe pick one or two each commissioner off of there, and work with it, and then be able to explain why you think that we should head this way.
Correct. I like that. Okay.
I'm good.
Okay. With that being said, we'll meet at 10:00 AM. Thank you. Meeting today is September 27, 2023. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Roll call, clerk.
Ostergrun. Wolfson. Sensor.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Through all of the agenda, and there is one change on that motion.
And the motions for the reappointments for the Roscommon County Transit Authority, it says committee, it should say board.
So move with the aforementioned correction, Mr. Chair.
Well, I
You also need to add a number 15, as you'll see, will be in the As you'll see, will be in the meeting forever if you don't.
Adjourn.
I appreciate that correction, madam, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Their call roll, please.
Censor. Yes. Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Milburn.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the minutes for 9:13, 2023 regular meeting. Have a second.
I'll start.
Discussion. Clerk call roll, please.
Guys make me nervous. Nobody wants to make a motion or second. Milburn.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Yes. Wolfson.
Number six, public comment. Do I have any public comment out there? Go ahead. Yes. Please turn your mic on and identify yourself.
My name is Greg Seemek. I'm a Girish Township president. Yesterday I saw that there was a special meeting and I watched the video last night. I thought it was to be a meeting to determine how best to conduct business in the future and was hopeful to see some move forward towards transparency and more open discussion. Instead, what I saw was an incredible display of people showing everyone in front of the public that they were entitled to continue personal attacks or that they were entitled to retaliate for personal attacks. Isn't that the type of interplay that everyone is saying they want avoided? I would like to suggest that personal feelings be put aside and the primary function of the board be to conduct county business in an open and transparent way. For that to happen, someone needs to stand up and start. Or better yet, everybody needs to stand up and start. I heard former Commissioner Melvin talk about how you should consider adopting an old system where two commissioners had to agree to put anything on the agenda. And then he talked about how he was ignored when he was first installed as commissioner. And then in the next breath, I heard him say that by the old system, he was never able to get anything done. It struck me that this board seems to have long ago adopted an operating system that was broken then. And here over a decade later seems to think that being dysfunctional is normal. I've had conversations with each person involved at these meetings. In my opinion, everyone has important things to contribute and everyone can communicate normally. The next step is simply to do it. I saw an empty chair at the special meeting and understood possibly one of the commissioners was unable to intend attend because it was called so late and without adequate time for all to be present. Shouldn't that be one of the first prerequisites of scheduling a meeting to make certain all five members can attend? I hear that things cannot be put on the work session agenda because it is too full. And yet the meeting today adjourned at approximately 10:45. I looked at the meeting minutes from September 13th and see that it adjourned at 10:40. Perhaps getting the county business done should be of primary importance over getting the meetings done. I applaud Michelle for once again asking for details of committee reports that the commissioners have attended. Simply hearing that commissioners attended meetings gives no insight into the details that the meetings accomplished. Doesn't need to be long, but a simple Cliff Notes version of the meeting would go a long way for keeping the public informed. I also want to commend Michelle for daring to state that the meeting yesterday was frivolous. In my opinion, everything that took place at the special meeting could have been worked out with better communication between the members of the board. I continue to feel as though board discussion about issues should be a priority at these meetings. And I was appalled when Commissioner Wolfson said he had one further comment to make before the special meeting adjourned. And he was told that he would not be heard. As a resident, I feel as though board discussion is already well below what I would expect on a regular basis. And I cannot understand why a member of the board would be denied the ability to speak whenever they felt they had something to bring to the board's attention. I don't want to be so naive as to say, can't we all be friends? But I do feel that if this is all you've got, something needs to change. And one last thing, I don't see on the agenda, but I understand that we no longer have a delegated authority for the dams due to resignation. I would like to suggest once again that someone be hired to fill that position at all the lakes as soon as possible. Certainly there is reason to feel as though someone needs to be considering decisions right now as lake levels and dam modification seem to have once again been relegated to the position of doing nothing. Here again, in my opinion, something needs to change. So thank you.
Thank you. I believe I have three online. The first one will be Julie Darden.
Julie, would you like to go ahead, please?
Yes. Good morning, Chairman Russo, and good morning, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me. I am currently on the campus of Michigan State, the beautiful campus, attending a three day meeting here in East Lansing. And I am joining your meeting as I did to listen into the work session this morning. And I certainly continue to understand the position that you all find yourselves in related to the, to the budget. I know that these are challenging times and certainly you find yourselves with many things that are worthy of funding and not really enough to go around. That said, I just wanted to let you all know that I would welcome the opportunity to discuss options for MSU extension to either be in the millage or in a, in a dedicated millage, perhaps in a cooperative millage with other departments. I've had preliminary conversations with Morgan from the, from the conservation district about the household hazardous waste program and its needs. I've had a preliminary conversation with the EDC for Ross Common. And while no decision was made about collaborating to do a millage, we at least were able to understand how we might start with that and whether that was something that would engage Michigan State in economic development programming or where we just might collaborate to have a millage that was dedicated that could be split among different organizations. Michigan State University Extension is present in more than 80 counties across the state of Michigan. We do have a lot of flexibility in the way that we serve those communities. So in some communities, additional buy-in has been done to meet other desired programs that we can, that we can deliver. And in other cases, we're, we're serving at a base level. And I, I appreciate the value that many of you shared that you see for MSU extension programs and priorities. We certainly want to do our best to bring the research of this university and other land grant universities to the benefit of communities, including Ross Common County. And, and we will continue to try to do that as best we can. And we will continue to appreciate the partnership and the hard work that you all provide for the citizens of Ross Common, making decisions and gathering information. So I can make myself available to discuss specific dollar amounts with any of you at a time that is convenient to you or to put together maybe a menu of how you might engage the services of Michigan State University Extension. And with that, just again, my deepest gratitude for the opportunity to, to visit with you today at a distance. And unfortunately I cannot remain for the, for the rest of your meeting, but thank you so much for this time.
Thank you.
Next we have a Mr. Leroy Johnston.
Leroy, go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'd like to speak regarding the Consumers Power Project that was presented during the work session. If you look at the map that they supplied, you'll notice that the project is taking off M-18 down Waco Road proceeding to the west for a number of miles and then going north on Reserve Road up until it gets to Emery Road. There are 120 property owners on Emery Road between Reserve Road and US 27. The Consumers Power route could just as easily, perhaps even more easily, have been taken straight through on Waco Road to 27. It can proceed another mile to the west of Reserve on Waco Road, which will get it across one of the wetlands in question, which is Pup Creek. The other one is Wolf Creek Headwaters. That's the only other wetland that they will have to encounter going off of that road. They'd have a three mile cross country trek. Otherwise you're looking at considerable devaluation to the property of 120 different landowners. It seems to me, I understand, we all want better power. We all want a more reliable power supply around Houghton Lake. We do need it. We've had four, four power outages this year in my area alone. And, you know, I live close to 55. But don't throw the rest of us under the bus to get it. Thank you very much.
Lastly, we have a Ryan Ritchie. Ryan.
Hi, Jo Jean Thompson. I'm with Up North Prevention. I came to introduce myself to you. I run the homeless shelter in Ross Common County. Also I work with the Drug Free Coalition in Ross Common County and help distribute the liquor tax funds that were awarded to Ross Common County residents in prevention. There's not enough time to present all of that good stuff. So there was a couple of things. I just wanted to let you know first who I am in my face. I wanted to let you also know that I appreciate everything that Ross Common County has done to distribute the American Recovery Plan funding. And I think of the counties that I'm involved with, I'm very, very proud of the foresight and the energy and the distribution. It was quick. It was well done. And although the, I was part of the group and they moved quickly, which was my speed. I appreciate, that's all I do it yesterday for me. But I also appreciate the fidelity and the care that everybody took in distributing that and the difference that that money has made. I've never dealt with money in that kind of level before, but the difference that that money made in its distribution. It's being wound up, as you know, as of December, but it also provided for homeless shelter. And that was a fledgling project that came out. And that money has saved us through the beginning hubbub of Michigan funding, which completely drops off for like three months, right in the middle of the the distribution cycle that we didn't know of. And so anyways, we will be finishing that money off and it was designated for security measures and we much appreciated that and it has been well spent. I wanted you to know just on that note, we have had this fiscal year, 75 families that have been reached. Some of those are singles. They're disabled people, they're elderly people and stuff that we've been able to work with and help them to find housing. And some of them have just been our invisible population. They were just neglected. One person was living in a closet. I call it a walk-in closet size in a home. Things that were uninhabitable. They were definitely homeless. We now have a new person that we brought on. Our staff has extended her case management where she, we call this program, the navigation program. So the people that call in, which we have about 25 every week, starting here in September, have called in and asked for services, if not a bed. She reaches out to them and she does what NIMSCA can't necessarily do because they don't have enough people. She gets them signed up and their case management begins even before they can enter into our system. So that particular brand new program has just started. We are funded through the Salvation Army and pop cans and donations. And it's been the pop cans that have saved us along with the ARP funds that have saved us. And it sounds rather unconventional, but there's a lot of pop being drunk in the community. So yeah, and other beverages that have 10 cents on. We don't, we don't mind where they come from. I do want you to know that I've also joined as, from an invitation through James, and I'm sorry if I mess up his name, Perialis. Perialis, thank you, through the, the Housing Task Force. As I've been part of that informal group for the last year with Jody Procola from DHS and, and others. We have landlords and agencies all come to the same table and try to figure out what is going on in Ross Common County and how can we beef that up? I'm also part of at least the data inventory through Alpina County. They've got a grant and they're looking to distribute it. And on that level, I advocate for Ross Common County and tell them, please send your help and your money this direction because I, I'm, I don't know if I should say this publicly, but I don't think we get enough from some regional funding sources. I, we're kind of caught in the middle. Sometimes not enough from the west or east or whatever. So I do advocate on a lot of different avenues. If any, and I don't know who from this board, if anybody who's on the liquor tax with NMRE. Caroline, you're doing that. Thank you for doing that. If you would like, every once in a while, if you have a little bit of time and you would like.
I apologize, but in the work session, you can only talk for.
I overdone.
But.
All right. I will reach out.
But anytime you want, I could put you on a work session versus public comment.
Yeah.
Where you could, we could have a good discussion.
Yes. So I do want to thank you guys for what you're doing. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Yeah, anytime you want to reach out, I could put you on a work session. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment?
Steve DuBois, Ross Common County Transit Authority Executive Director. First, I want to apologize for missing the work session a few weeks ago. I got double booked with the M.D. Annual Transit Conference. Attend that. So that's why I wasn't here, but I apologize for that. I'll be quick. I just want to give you kind of a quick update. Deborah Rond across with, with me today. She's our mobility manager. She is our mobility manager that does a, a lot of the stuff in the community that nobody knows about. When somebody needs a ride out of county, she's the one that organizes that. And she finds the best opportunity that's available for transportation anywhere in the state. If a veteran needs to go down to Ann Arbor for treatment, she's the one that does, organizes that transportation. He gets it so that, that veteran can get there. Whether it's from a funding standpoint, whether it's from a, who we use. We do transportation, obviously in the county and throughout the state for all of our residents. But we're not always the, the only option that's out there. The veterans also have a bus that go back and forth through, throughout the state. And a lot of times we're communicating or coordinating with that transportation as well. She's the one that handles that. So if anybody is ever in need of, of transportation anywhere in the state for medical purposes, she's the one to reach out to and you can call the main number, the 665309. And she's option number two. On the side of that, we are in full swing or starting to get in full swing with our new building facility project. They did four footings last week. So they're telling us we should have an actual building standing before the snow flies. So we'll have to wait and see if that actually happens or not. And the only other thing I really wanted to mention is we are still very short on drivers. We're, we're down about 10 drivers right now, which is the worst I've ever seen it's in the 10 years that I've been there. And a lot of things are contributing to that. Me, the marijuana law is one of the, the worst things that's, that's happened to us. We just had another new hire come in that we can't consider because they smoke marijuana. It's still federally illegal. So it's been very challenging getting people that, that can qualify to be a bus driver today. Not to mention the people that want to drive. If anybody knows anybody, we could definitely use, definitely use the help. Please send them our way if they're looking for a job part time. An occasional basis, we'll, we'll work to get people on the road and get more buses going. All I have. All I have.
Mr. Chair, since he wasn't here for the work session, uh, where we normally be like, can I just ask a couple of quick questions?
Not really. I don't really want to get into that. I apologize. But I would have to allow it for other people with public comment. Thank you, Steve. Administrator Controller Report, please.
So we're trying something new based on all of our communications. Um, unfortunately, a little late to get it into the packet based on the discussions we had yesterday. But I did email out to all of the board members um at the end of the day yesterday, my report. Um, that I will be providing. And then just for the public's awareness, what we will do is um from now on, we will actually include that as a report in the agenda packet. It will end up being. Shortened because the packet's ready by Thursday, Friday at the latest. So anything that happened between when the packets put together and Wednesday morning. Um, would not be included and would be an additional, which we had discussed in that nature as well. What's not in my report um that I did want to mention, um, Mr. Seemak brought up is I know you all received my um. That hearing's done. I retire from Higgins Lake. Um, so I just wanted to make sure everybody had received that. Um, okay. And then I know that'll be a topic later that Commissioner Censor and Commissioner Wolfson will bring up. So a quick lawsuit update, um, no new changes in the Kirk versus Ross Common County Treasurers. Um, Cho versus Ross Common County. I just left the reminder on there that we do have the pre-trial set for November sixteenth at two P M. Um, no current updates on the opioid suits. Um, and then there was a appeal filed in the Court of Appeals on September fifteenth. For the Higgins Lake SAD. So as that comes about, I will keep you informed as that um. In the same fashion as the others, uh, special assessment projects, uh, again, Higgins Lake, the SAD was affirmed on September fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Um, I do want to note that the Spicer's webinar um that they will be putting on to discuss their reportings, um, findings, et cetera, on Higgins Lake. Will be on October third. I did the flyers over here for anybody of the public that would like to take one, um, and that will be virtual at six o'clock. So. Lake St. Helen, it's just, we are set for December fifteenth, so we're just waiting for December fifteenth for that hearing. Houghton Lake has the most going on right now. Um, we are currently working on determining the methodology options for apportionment. Um, and I have asked um. The commissioners assigned to the Lake Level Control Structures Committee if they'd be willing to swap on and off to attend the biweekly meetings so that we have that knowledge and insight already available. Um, as you are well aware, um, the final decisions when it comes to how you determine apportionment is is yours. So there will be recommendation recommendations made to you, information provided to you, and then that is your decision, what factors. We'll go into that. Um, what weights are assigned to each factor along with that. So my thought was, um, if I have them kind of coming in and out of these meetings. Then that information's already shared with members of the board who are intimately involved in the process already. Um, Commissioner Wolfson attended uh pretty much our very first one where we met with the assessors. Um, and as soon as we have the next one scheduled. Um, that will move forward. So. We are continuing the discussions with the State of Michigan Real Estate Division to be granted easement to the Lake Level Control Structure. Um, I I'll be honest, we're trying not to pay for it because, you know, the state will charge us as much money as they can for that. Um, so we're we're trying to persuade them to gift that to the county. As easement access only not give us the property, but just as the easements for that as well. Um, now that the assessors have begun to provide the information regarding the special assessment properties. Um, we should expect to have that quote for phase one of engineering by the end of October. That phase one um is what consists of your pre-planning. Um, and then. You'd be able to know how much the actual project would cost. Um, we will see the same situation with Lake St. Helen where the phase one engineering will have to be financed by. Um, for the design and planning before we would be eligible to apply for bonding. That could be roughly a hundred thousand per structure for phase one. So just keep that in mind, please. Couple legislation updates for you to be aware of. Um, the legislation um is working to extend a binding arbitration to county correctional officers. Um, this has been a long process of five, six, seven, ten years. And essentially what that means is that the binding arbitration, which currently covers all our law enforcement officers. Would also then extend to correctional officers as well. For our county, this does nothing for us. They are joined in a union. So the union contracts as binding arbitration. Um, so our correctional officers are covered under by burning arbitration already. Um, we do have a current trend going for um including the Youth Indigent Defense Council. In the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission Act. That means that the same process of having a um. Managerial attorney oversee assignments um would apply then for our youth. Um, how this works is they bring it into the same M I D C program we currently work with for adults. Um, and we'll see. It it a lot of the costs then leave our control. Um, my largest concern is we're running out of attorneys in this area to represent people. Daily work um to do the final preparations with the special assessment team for Higgins Lake hearings. Creations of the budgets, obviously, for the union proposals for one percent. Um, I've continued meeting with department heads for the twenty twenty four budgets. Um, we'd like to spend a lot of quality time together during this this time of year. Um, I have begun the process with the anticipated three percent increase, as I had mentioned before, for non-union, though obviously. We'll see if it's feasible or not. Uh, the local planning team meeting, which is the other portion of emergency management's team meetings. Um, was held last week. It's a bi-monthly meeting. Um, basically, major discussions were on a rescue task force, which is for emergency um medical. And for training and aligning of school safety drills in the area. Uh, let's see, what else is good? I completed my assignments from the Lake Level Control Structure Committee. Um, relevant to the bid documents for the delegated authority upon final approval from them. The document information was sent to Crawford County Avalanche, um, Houghton Lake Resort, our. Michigan Association of Counties for posting and is posted on our website under our bids. And we have about a hundred and fifty contractors that subscribe for bids through the website, so they automatically would have gotten that information. Um, Commissioner Wilson is the contact for all bids and all bid questions, so he'd be the one that'd be able to give you any information on progress. Um, I did attend a My Sims training for emergency management. Thanks, Massa. You did great. Um, and essentially what the My Sims is, is that's the program for uh recording all the information rega- relevant to a small, large. Medium um incident in the area. Um, me specifically, of course, I'm financial data. So that would be relevant and then information that you guys would want to know as far as um how much is this costing us? Where are we going to get the money? Are people donating? Those types of questions. So I would have access for that as well. I attended a really fun virtual training hosted by Eagle, Knowing Your Septic System, Septic Smart. Um, if you can find it online, uh, they did a nice job of discussing how septic's operate. Um, pluses and minus of it, um, results of poor operations, poor maintenance. Um, and then followed up with some discussion on the state initiatives that are moving forward for a five-year plan. Of septic inspections uh and how that is being fast-tracked through the state senate and the state house as well. Open enrollment for benefits will be October twenty seventh through November eighth. This is all done online. Everybody gets an email. You have an email link. We are going to bring Jennifer in from Advantage Benefits, and that's uh specifically what I'd like her to do is to concentrate on our law enforcement side. We have discussed how they will be in that other plan, so knowing what that change in co-pays in, but the other portion of that is working to educate. Um, them for the use of the flexible spending account and seeing if we can get people to understand that and enroll more to assist with some savings there as well. Our Emergency Management Director is currently uh researching some remotely activated electromagnetic locks. For our court side. Um, this is part of a court security initiative that has um come down through the state of Michigan. Um, and we will be looking at any grants, donations and fundings for that. Um, you're probably talking like fifteen thousand is what we're up to as a best estimate right now. Um, so I think that that it's definitely a doable thing with the information that we have. Um, Sheriff was very unhappy last weekend. Um, his office flooded. Sheriff's not here. He would tell you he was very unhappy. Um, there was a toilet in the back end where the offices are that um overflowed. In some way, shape or another, um, we ended up with two to three inches of standing water. On the um bathroom in the sheriff's office and in lieutenant's office as well. Um, so that's been submitted. The carpeting's been ripped up. Um, it just probably would have been worse if somebody wouldn't have gone back there, but it's the far back end where there's no inmates. There's no staff during the weekends, so. That is taken care of and will be covered by insurance. Um, several new foyer requests. Um, now we're on to Lake St. Helen foyer requests. So so it's something good. Um, we did officially complete the hiring now of Phil Benley to work on updating our website. I have asked him to start with the lake level section. Um, and have given him contact information for Commissioner Osterman because he volunteered. To assist with that project as well. So we'll get that started, get going. Once he's done with that, um, we're going to kind of go page by page for updates, information. Um, Julie has kept a running list of things as she's found it, as have some other department heads as well. So we'll get that going. Um, I did provide for you guys a copy of the newly approved Commission on Aging Budget. Um, Commissioner Sensor said this is very nice, but why do I need to know this? Um, so what I want you to be aware of is that under statute. The county is responsible for some specific senior services. Um, you have the ability to contract out to somebody. Um, when you contract those services out through a special millage like the county of Ross Common does, you must have a contract for those services. That being said, part of your oversight is to. Look at that budget and make sure they're fiscally sound and make sure they are spending the money on what they're supposed to be spending money on for seniors. You don't approve it, you don't sign off on it, um, but you can withhold millage money from them if they are not doing what they are supposed to do. So. Um, I have also registered to attend the Materials Management Learning Seminars in October. Um. Bless Commissioner Sensor. She is right along with me, trying to fit in all this new knowledge as we go through. So that's about it.
Thank you.
I have some questions. Now, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Jody, I really, this has really helped me because I can follow along and I'm able to make notes on. You know, what I got yesterday. So this is going to be a positive thing, Mr. Chair. Please, please. Courage versus Ross Common County. Can you tell me what that is, that that lawsuit is about?
Sure. The Courage versus Ross Common County Treasurer is an individual who has entered into suit in regards to um the tax foreclosure. Of a parcel of property. So that one is held until the next one and the next one. As you go up. So it is very specifically an individual who has filed suit against the county for um undue taking. Under that same other process.
Okay, no, no, no. Okay, no, I just curious about what it was. There there's a number of those too, aren't there?
There are. And so we're on a small end that Courage versus Ross Common.
And that's one of the things Rebecca Reagan was talking about as far as having the amount of money, how much we're going to have left on that, all the taxing.
Yes, sir.
Great, great. And the opioid suit, what is that about? I mean, I mean, you told it a long time ago, but I forgot.
Okay, so uh, gosh, three and a half, four years ago, um. Due to the abuse of opiates and the increased cost of counties, townships, um, and the state for treating, for jailing, um rehabilitation. Of addictions due to over-prescribing of opiates. Um, everybody joined on, basically. It's not a class action suit, but it's like a class action suit. Um, so we've gone after as a whole, three major manufacturers. Um, and there's a certain.
Be as a county are suing someone else?
All the counties.
All the counties and states.
Okay, so that's that's we're the plaintiffs.
Yes, for once, yes. Um, so yes, um, so we have had three major ones that have come through. And then um we're waiting on a Walgreens settlement and there's also a Walmart settlement that would be in place as well. So that money, the state of Michigan decided how much every county and municipality will get. Um, so as that money comes in, that's where we're talking about, okay, that's going to be in its own little trust account because. The board's going to need to be able to focus and say, okay, here's all these specific things that the state says that we can do with this funding. Um, and it is very specific, and that's where people like Jo Jean will come in handy. Um, of where can this usage of the opiate goes. And I know. Yeah, so and like some of the proposals, but that is where that comes and it's just, they just keep adding on as the court says, yes, this person's responsible. Um, there's just that little inkling and treatings of money. So I mean, but we could end up with overall um for. Treatment of opiate abuse, rehabilitation, um, jail services related to, we could end up with over five hundred thousand dollars, but it's only for that.
For that, sure.
Yeah.
And and on the Houghton Lake, on the options for apportionment, that's what that's what everybody's concerned with is how. Exactly how does that work and how much flexibility do we have, say, assigning so much to one particular class, for example, the state of Michigan and the townships and or the individual property owners? I'm just curious about how that and and will the public be notified about what's taking, what's going on and how the apportionment is going to be so they can come in, voice their opinions?
So Rex actually just said that he would like to take this one because he's done this also as the drink commissioner. So he'll be a better. He's a better person than me.
Um, at the point right now. The engineers are figuring out what they're going to suggest as to what types of property, hey, what percentages. And then we look at that as a board and determine whether or not we think that's fair and just. And if we think there needs to be adjustments to it, we recommend that as a board.
So we'll have input.
Yes, we'll definitely have input. And and then once that's in place, that stays within properties. Virtually ever unless there's splits and combinations or use of change. Um, but in that is it's it's a process of trying to make sure. Everybody is fairly treated. Um, I know there's some discussion going on about involving footages. On the lake. The reason being is there are some entities that have large parcels. And treat everybody fairly. We have to look at footages. I don't mean we have to charge or or what we charge, but we have to look at that issue. Well, there's a lot of factors that enter into this because Houghton Lake's a big one because we have commercial properties. We have residential properties. We have governmental properties. And, you know, the whole process.
Some multiplier of front footage versus square footage.
Um, there's probably going to be like a base permit or base percentage. And then how you fall under these other classifications may determine where your percentage goes from there.
And are we going to publish that before we have a public meeting on it? So people have some kind of idea on, you know, what's going on or or not.
Um.
Up with the.
Well, no, it'll be. So what will happen, um, Commissioner Osterman is obviously. Once the task force is kind of finalized on their recommendations, it will be a public meeting. Um, and if this board so chooses that they would like to make sure that. People are let known that that's consideration in some format or another.
Yeah, because they should have some kind of public.
We could have a special public meeting on it.
Yeah, yeah, they they may have some good ideas.
How we handle it from there is is going to be up to the board.
Okay, cool. And and excuse me, one second.
Um, Spicer's Engineering drafted the assessment. It was a little bit simpler because it was based on benefit. And, you know. What degree of benefit you received. If there's a drain right in front of your property, that's obviously a better benefit. Than the person that's contributing to that water problem. It was a little simpler, but um. Once they drafted it, we had that package available when we had the public hearing. As, you know, when we put the bidding together in the project and and we had a big sheet, anybody could come in and see. You know, what their percentage was and we could explain why if they needed to explain to them. And we could make changes as the day went along. If something was brought to our attention, we didn't know of before.
Therefore, the reason for the public meeting.
Correct.
So when um, once you guys get to the portion where and and just for some ideas of some of the things that are on the list and data that's being collected, um, number of campsites that could potentially be. Utilized for revenue collections um would be a factor that you will be getting data on.
Are there are there state parks down at Houghton Lake like there are at Higgins?
Yes. Um, and you you will be looking at um for the purposes of. Not getting sued. You'll be looking at the criteria that you set for Houghton will carry through. You'll be looking at the criteria that you set for Houghton will carry through to your other two. So that will be forward thinking thoughts on your parts when you get to this Houghton Lake discussion is if you're looking at weights for.
My thoughts exactly.
Yes. So that will need to carry through in your thought. And that's why some of those factors that may seem sillier on Houghton Lake might not be when you go forward to, say, Higgins Lake. So that'll be something for you guys to take in. But yeah, so you'll have those decisions in the public. Once that information is set, then starts that whole public hearing process for the project. That's that whole, and Rex has done that as well. You have, I call it the day of reckoning, but that's not what it's really called, where everybody receives a notice so they can come in, they can call in, they can send letters to review, discuss, make claims against.
And I see your lessons in there, the prediction that phase one engineering could be roughly $100,000 per structure, is that correct?
I would say yes, so when we initially.
For each one of the lakes?
That would be if you have a project that involves replacing, yes. So when we received in 2021 the bids for Houghton Lake, and that was just for what we believed was going to be repair at that time, it was $83,000 for phase one. So I'm looking at inflation.
Any, any estimates at all on what the actual structure is going to cost?
I have no idea.
Right now, we don't.
It's going to be 500,000, a million, 2 million.
I'm gonna, yeah, keep going.
It's a big dam, I know.
It's not even that it's a big dam, it's just a big project.
Very big project.
Just a couple more things. Yeah, just a couple more things.
To remove any ambiguity, we will be transparent, we will hold public meetings to best keep the public informed.
Thank you.
No, no, I just had a couple more. The open enrollment for benefits, is that for health insurance only?
Yes.
It's for all of our benefits, vision, dental, life insurance, all of our.
You're not a part of it, you don't have to worry about it.
Nope, that's false. You have to say no. So, yeah. Yes. Or call your wife, ask Commissioner Russo.
Hey, thanks, this has really helped me out a lot, Mr. Chair. I hope you see that it is not my motive at all to give Jody a hard time. It just helps the clarification. I know the audience probably wonders when you're going through this stuff, what it all means. If I don't understand it, I know a lot of them probably don't. So thank you very much. Appreciate the board okay event.
We're going to move on to course balance, there's only three, A through C, monthly department reports, I don't see none. Visitors, number 10, do I have any visitors? Please turn your mic on, state your name for the record.
Danielle Janice, Court Administrator for the Second District Court. I had logged in during the budget portion today and I heard Jody begin to try did a very good job explaining the 2021 State of Michigan jail reform. And really what that did was it took a lot of court discretion in sentencing and, and put in statute that the presumption is misdemeanor cases, unless it's an assault of crime, shall not spend any time in jail and shall not be placed on probation unless the court, there's certain factors, can overcome that presumption, which is, it's very difficult to overcome that presumption. So the only recourse for individuals at sentencing in those situations is us sentencing, sentencing them to fines and costs. However, we also statutorily cannot put somebody in jail if they don't have the ability to pay fines and costs. So now what you're seeing is a significant loss of revenue, right? All of these statutory amendments were made with really the lack of foresight of how the courts would remain funded. Truly, the caseload has not gone down, which I provided, I can provide you guys with caseload trends. This is the district court, it's a capture of the last three years. You'll see, you know, COVID kind of skews things a little bit, obviously, right? Because 2020, we have that huge dip, operations were slowed down. It's not that crimes weren't committed and cases weren't inevitably filed, but it's not the same numbers that you would typically see. And then that also carries over into 2021 because then you have a huge influx of backlog cases. So keeping that in mind, when you look at these numbers, we are on the upswing now. Caseload is, is going up, but revenues are going down. And, and I offered you that explanation. It's not that the court isn't doing their due diligence in collections. We have to submit a yearly report to the Supreme Court Administrative Office for for fines and costs imposed and what's been collected. As of June 30th, we are sitting at an 88.9% collection rate, which in the bigger scheme of things is pretty good, right? Without having any ability to hold anyone's feet to the fire, even with speeding tickets. I know Jody somewhat touched on this, but fire two, October of 2021, in the event that somebody didn't pay a speeding ticket, right? They inevitably, once they went through the timeline, would have their license suspended by the court, SOS would, would do a license suspension. So that would provoked one to take care of their outstanding speed, speeding tickets. That was taken away in October of 21. So you could have speeding tickets all over the state of Michigan and unless courts are scheduling order to show causes, summoning, summoning those respondents to come into court and explain why they didn't pay their fines and costs, which obviously also, right, more money, more time in the courtroom, more postage, right? Unless that person doesn't appear at that show cause, there really is no recourse. If the person doesn't show up at that show cause, we're now to bench warrants for their arrest for speeding. I don't know if I can reiterate if you're understanding that. Bench warrants are the only remedy the court has right now for holding one accountable to spit, to pay their speeding ticket. And that's only if they do not appear for a show cause. They appear for a show cause and tell the court, you know, I'm on hard times, I can only afford to pay $5 a month for my $115 civil infraction. Well, that, the court has to accept that. Typically, if you're to the point of a show cause, they're not appearing and it's not being paid and there's a bench warrant being issued for their arrest for a $100 violation, $115 violation.
Except jail space.
Except jail space. Well, and the resources, a lot of times it's not happening in our county when they get picked up. They could be in Genesee County and stopped up for speeding down there and here's a bench warrant in Roscommon County, so.
Will they jail them down there if that happens?
Well, they'll contact our, our jail and ask them if they're willing to pick up. And then it's really the resources available at the Roscommon County Jail at the time if they can go and pick them up, if they can, you know. So then you're spending overtime for deputies to go down, pick them up. And not to mention that once you lodge them, the odds of them actually paying for their jail.
So the odds are you guys don't go down and pick them up?
Well, I, I can't speak for the jail, right? We do set our warrants, they specifically.
For mileage, don't you?
What?
So many miles to go.
Well, yes, yeah. Typically, it's, you know, 50 mile pickup for a civil infraction. They'll still contact a lot of times though, to verify whether or not we actually put on our bench warrants, the amount that they owe the court and say if it's, if it's paid, you know, no need to appear in court. So sometimes the person on the side of the road, if they even think for a second that they're going to be lodged, they'll just pay it knowing that this is, you know, they'll, they'll be done with the Roscommon District Court. But I'm just trying to give you guys that full picture, right? The cases are still existing. If anything, expectations or responsibilities of the court are ever increasing. But the revenue isn't there. I mean, it, it's not, we, we statutorily don't have the ability to, to sentence anybody more than what we're doing now. I have negotiated new contracts with all of our vendors in the Roscommon District Court and the 82nd District Court of Ogama County. Now that we are running both the courts, the same, the same judge. I'm, for the time being, administrating over there. I was able to get contractors to reduce, to do a one invoice for both courts split down the middle and, and they took off 10,000 here, 10,000 there for different contracts. So I'm, I'm doing my due diligence. I'm obviously sensitive to the fact that while our revenues aren't coming in and the caseload is still the same, I haven't filled a position in my office in a way to save the county's budget. So I also provided to all of you, which my apologies, Chair, Co-Chair, I know you guys are probably fully aware of what the district court does on a daily basis. So don't think that I'm, I believe that you don't. But for the new commissioners, this is everything that the district court is statutorily required to provide all the citizens of Roscommon County. You have a full picture of what goes on in district court. Sometimes people don't, or they just don't know, right? I guess unless you are one of the individuals that have something like this going on, you wouldn't know that. But my door's always open if you guys have any other questions as far as, I, I know the district court takes up a large chunk of our county's budget, so I just want to remain transparent with all of you. And I welcome any questions.
I noticed that the drug caseload trend is down, but the drunk driving caseload is up.
It is.
Is that because of the new marijuana laws or not getting arrested for drugs?
No, no, no. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say it like that. I say, I say it like that because I wish that was the case, honestly. Methamphetamine went through the roof, through the roof, every county.
In 2022.
In. It, starting in 2018, actually. You don't have, you don't have 2018 or 2019 captured on here, but that's when methamphetamine blew the doors open. So quite honestly, why you see that trend of, of a dip, I think that, that it's not that, it's not out there. It's that we had a newly elected judge, new prosecutor, and cases kind, they just weren't getting issued as quickly as they had in the past. So do I anticipate that next year, when I run our totals from this year, it's going to bounce back up? Yes, absolutely. There is a significant trend in at least the surrounding counties that I have been in contact with of drunk, drunk and under the influence of drugs, driving. Whether that is the result of, you know, the marijuana legalization, I, I can attest to that, I, I don't know, but.
Do they test for marijuana from driving now?
Well, certainly they take them for blood.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so there is, so when you see the drunk driving.
It's not like I'm on the side of the road testing for marijuana.
Not at, not at this time.
Smell it in their car and there's probable cause, I can take them.
Yes, did.
Get them tested.
Yes, yep, yep. Absolutely, or a search warrant inevitably is issued, no different than like a alcohol search warrant. But, um, yeah, those two things are going up, so.
So at the start of your conversation, you said there's no jail time for misdemeanors now, correct?
I, the assumption is, based on criminal history and what the offense is, that there is no jail time.
That's a relief.
All right, we good?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We'll move on to number 11, unfinished new business. I put on there, Commissioners, can you assignments, wow, can you talk, discussion of the whole, I just wanted to bring up, everyone has their committee sheets. If you can't make a committee, give me a call if you can't get ahold of your alternate. That's the only thing I want to bring up. It's important because I don't want somebody to miss something in their committee. Mark's pretty good about that.
We will have a talk.
Okay.
We, we need somebody for, you know, the back of EDC. Person for, actually, the, you actually need to see that that Jody is the secretary of, and we need somebody for MCOT.
Okay.
I mean, I would ask the Chair to review the committee assignments. You should have somebody go to MCOT, and I'm pretty full. I don't know about Eric or Darlene or Rex, but we need to have somebody attend.
Yeah. You know, the sheets cut down by probably 20, 25% from what we used to have.
I, I agree that we should review that sheet. We are a new board. What avenues we take as board members to try and prove our county is different than the old board? And some of these committees, we may feel we can better spend our time doing something else for the county.
I agree.
As a new board, we need to review this. And I, I mean, that was given to us at the first of the year. We knew nothing about it, we didn't have any experience in it. And now as time has moved along, we have, getting a handle on things better.
Okay, this will be on in two weeks.
Can we do it in a work session or?
Yeah, that's where we're going to.
Or one-on-one basis, whatever.
The one thing if you would like for Julie and I to, some of those things, as unimportant as they stand, are statutory requirements. So if you would like Julie and I to highlight that, include that in your next packet, okay, wonderful.
And then, oh, can I add something to the?
Yeah.
I just want to say, I've had, been approached about we should review whether we want to continue with Zoom meetings. And I'd like to talk about it at the next work session.
And. Jody, did you touch on post the number one? Or we go with that? I know you wrote it down. But we're not put on the next work session.
So I have down for the next work session, the first thing that you guys have chosen is general fund millage options.
Thank you. Okay, that'll be on in two weeks.
And that's going to, and that's where we're going to discuss the various.
Yes.
Okay, all the various different things that go into the line item.
Correct.
We have the sheets out, okay.
Okay, motions and resolutions, Michelle.
Okay. Uh, motion number one. Move to adopt resolution number 2023-09-01 proclaiming September 28, 2023 as Eleanor Tucker Day. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners proclamation of September 28, 2023 as Eleanor Tucker Day, resolution number 2023-09-01. Whereas Eleanor Tucker is a resident of Roscommon County for over 90 years, moving with her family to the village of Roscommon to operate a farm located on Lake Street. And whereas her strong sense of honor, duty and family encouraged her desire to enlist in the United States Marine Corps at the start of World War II, to which she served faithfully and loyally. And whereas Eleanor Tucker utilized the resources offered to her through the Marine Corps to obtain a college education through Michigan State College, then returning to the area to continue to serve her community and retaining her lifelong motto of always being a Marine, serving and protecting her county and country. And whereas, September 28, 2023 serves as the 100th birthday celebration for Eleanor Tucker, who continues to reside within Roscommon County. Now therefore be it resolved that in honor of her dedication to county and country, the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners declares that in Roscommon County, Michigan, November 28, 2023 will be recognized as Eleanor Tucker Day.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second, oh, go ahead, Eric.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Yes. I have two of those in front of me. There's a difference going on here.
The one that's.
Your board packet?
One is what's going to be put into a frame? And the other is, so the answer is no, there is no difference.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate the, the board allowing this to transpire. This is a remarkable person and it's so, it's going to be a great honor to present a certificate basically to her tomorrow. It's going to transpire at the Roscommon County Commission on Aging. I've been told 11:30 myself and the chairman are going to be there in uniform to present her an award. Public's invited, it's going to be at the Commission on Aging tomorrow. We're going to have lunch and then do the presentation. I appreciate Jody in the office, your hard work, diligence, putting this together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
It'll be fine.
Sencer.
Yes.
Wolfson. Russo.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Melburn.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Motion number two, please.
Move to approve and formally recognize, honor and bestow Mr. Chuck Corwin as the 2023 Roscommon County Person of the Year. Mr. Corwin will be formally recognized during the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on November 22, 2023 at 10 o'clock AM.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that. Discussion.
Excellent candidate, I appreciate the board recognizing. Excellent candidate. I appreciate the board recognizing Mr. Chuck Corwin to receive this award. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Cheryl, would you call a roll, please?
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion number three, please.
Move to adopt resolution number 2023-09-02, resolution submitting to a vote of the electorate, a special millage for spongy moth suppression program services. Resolution submitting to a vote of the electorate, a special millage for spongy moth suppression program services, resolution number 2023-09-02. Whereas, the County of Roscommon has operated a spongy moth suppression program for over two decades. And whereas, the current program continues to see a need for services and is fully supported and requested by the residents of Roscommon County. And whereas, it is the desire of the County of Roscommon County, of, excuse me, it is the desire of the County of Roscommon Board of Commissioners to continue to provide services and options to its residents that improve quality of life and improve and enhance property values. And whereas, spongy moths are an invasive species that create havoc in natural resources and greatly affect the ability to enjoy our natural resources. Therefore be it resolved that the following question be submitted to a vote of the electorate in the primary election to be held on February 27, 2024. Spongy moth suppression program services millage proposal. Shall the tax limitation of the general ad valorem taxes with the County of Roscommon imposed under Article 9, Section 6 of the Michigan Constitution be increased by .2500 mil, .25 cents per $1,000 of taxable value for four years, 2024 through 2027 inclusive, for the support and overall operations of the Roscommon County spongy moth suppression program? And shall the county be authorized to levy such increase in millage for said purpose, which will raise in the first year an estimated $410,557.52?
So move. A second. Discussion.
Yes. In this, this is primary election, February 27. That's lockdown then? Is that primary lockdown for that?
So as far as I have been provided information, and I now have the fancy calendar for that date, the legislature intends to convene for the year November 9 to allow all of those election bills that were not given immediate effect to go into effect. So yes, unless something happens that they don't convene, this is your date.
And if it changes, we have to change this resolution?
Yes.
I really appreciate the board voting yes on this. It's something that I've been talking about for quite a while. I'm on the committee to look into that stuff. I've attended the meetings with the folks that are doing, and it's something we really need in this county. I mean, we need money into it. And it's, it's a specific line item, and I think everybody can get behind it. It's not, you know, a general increase in our taxes, but, you know, point two, you know, 25 cents for every thousand dollars is not too much money for people.
I just wish the surrounding counties did it also.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, like everyone has told me, informed me that they don't do it on state land. So it doesn't do you, still, we're still gonna get it, you know? But the personal property, we need to protect our personal property.
Cheryl, would you call a roll, please?
Milburn.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Resolution carried.
Motion number four, please.
Move to reappoint Sherri Johnson to the Roscommon County Transit Authority Board for a two-year term effective 10/1/2023 and ending 9/30/2025.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number five, please.
Move to reappoint Richard Copel to the Roscommon County Transit Authority Board for a two-year term effective 10/1/2023 and ending 9/30/2025.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I can.
Discussion. Call roll.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number six.
Move to reappoint Albert Schultz to the Roscommon County Transit Authority Board for a two-year term effective 10/1/2023 and ending 9/30/2025.
So move. Discussion. Call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number seven.
Move to reappoint Sean Petrie to the Roscommon County Transit Authority Board for a two-year term effective 10/1/2023 and ending 9/30/2025.
So move.
I can.
Discussion. Call roll.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrun.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
A point and order, Mr. Chair. And I think we went by this in the unfinished business. We were gonna be talking about the 1%, increase for the, you know, for our Sheriff's Department. We never got around to doing that. And it's something that we should discuss, right, Jody?
Yeah, it's not even on the agenda.
It's still unfinished business, and I thought that we were gonna be talking about that.
So yes, we did say that. You did say that in the work session. I'm not sure how it didn't get added, but it is super important that you guys come up with that final, Mr. Chair, direction.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we need, we need to take care of it. It was missed on the agenda.
And so that's what I thought. I was looking, I'm going, something went by me here, because I knew we were gonna talk about it.
I understand, wait a minute, but we have to, I need support from everybody to put it on so we could discuss it before everyone starts talking.
A second.
Okay.
Mr. Friendly, Mr. Chair, you have that direction. You're the chairman. Our recommendation to you is that we add it.
Okay. Well, I have a first and a second already, so.
Motion, Mr. Chair, the way I look at it, you're the chairman, you can decide.
Okay. Since everyone's in favor, started, Eric.
Yeah, Jody, you were gonna put together some numbers for us and take a look at what did you come up with?
Sheriff! Come up. Yes, please.
We're gonna embarrass you.
He doesn't get embarrassed.
No, and he's used to me by now, unfortunately. So a lot of what I put together for wages and salaries comes up with where sheriff is able to reduce other areas of his budget, because even the millage fund for the road patrol and others is limited. So A equals minus B equals C. So in our discussions, the 207, which is the millage, road patrol millage fund, sheriff has been able to successfully utilize.
Correct.
Yep, those funds for the 1%. As we move forward with the general funds, we're in a little bit more of a tough spot.
Tighter. It's a tighter situation on the general fund.
Yep. So that really falls on two main budgets, which is the jail budget and the sheriff's administration budget. So as of late yesterday, it was my understanding that sheriff had gone back and that he was able to locate areas that we could come up with some reduction so that we could use the $65,000 for 1% increase in addition to.
Correct, which I can provide those to you.
Okay.
Later on today.
I hope that isn't gonna hurt the overall performance of the, of the department. Obviously not, otherwise you wouldn't be coming up with, what areas did you have to get into to?
It's a multitude of different line items where I have to move money to make it work out.
We don't want it to be a people expense. We want it to be some other kind of, hopefully.
Right. I, I mean, there's, there's only one pot of money there as far as the jail goes. So cutting a little bit in different areas, equipment and some different upgrades that we, that we were looking at doing, that the jail actually at some point in the future is gonna need. We're trying to be proactive and look into the future as far as maintenance and, and redoing things in the jail so that it's not a burden on the county later on. They have to push those back a little bit.
Like toilets?
Yeah, leaky toilets and, so just by, by doing adjustments and maybe postponing some things that we would like to do the following year, make it, make it push out a little bit, or it be a slower process to, to upgrade those things.
It's really important that it's not a people expense. That's what, that's why I'm driving it up. Okay. And that we're doing it for our people. I mean, like you said, like I've said before, you guys are first line of defense out there. That's very important.
I, I can tell you that the county was gracious enough to do a wage study a couple of years ago for corrections and for our road patrol officers. When it comes, and we'll just, just talk about wages itself. When it comes to wages, our employees, our officers, our correction staff are under, underpaid based on our population and our square footage of the county compared to other agencies. They're under. And I know, for example, the deputies' union in Crawford County is just settling a contract where they just got another large raise. It's hard to maintain employees when surrounding areas are paying more money, especially with the way our economy is right now. The cost of everything going up, people are looking at now compared to the future. I know we have, we have awesome benefits and awesome retirement, but when it comes to surviving on the day-to-day, they're looking at right now and not 10, 15, 20 or something. Wages are important.
So is this something that we can put forward in a motion to make that offer today? Because you said we were hard pressed for time, Jody?
We have to, you can't do it today.
There's more to.
Commissioner Wolfson wanted to talk. That's all I'm saying.
There's more to this counter offer if we're gonna make one than just a 1% raise. Above the 1%. There's more to, if you go back and read the Controller's initial recommendation, there's more in that than just talking about a percentage of raise.
So in essence, what you would have to do is you would have to make a counter offer to the union.
Okay. So that's what, that's what I'm saying. Can we, can we make a counter offer to the union with the additional 1%?
So.
What do we do with the other things that are in the offer?
So, okay, two unions. We have the Command Officers Association of Michigan that represents your sergeants and your lieutenants. They have asked for the, their option B was the alternative plan with the increased copays, locking in the retiree health insurance, where it's the 50 to 55 years of age gets X amount per month, 56 to 62, for those currently employed. And then a 1%. This is where it all gets confusing, I know. The Police Officers Association of Michigan, which is, which is also sheriffs, is everybody else that works over there. They had asked for everything that I just said, except for they didn't include the additional 1%. The caveat is because the wages of the management are linked to what is paid below, if you give 1% to the COAM, POAM automatically gets a 1%. That's the best way I can think to explain it. So yes, you can counter offer. If you would like to instruct me to offer to the Police Officers Association of Michigan, the alternative B insurance locked in retiree health and an additional 1%. I don't have any of the two reps here, but I'm pretty sure they're not gonna say no to more than they asked for.
That's the 1% over the 1%.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yep. And then you would be accepting the command officers, basically. So you'd be accepting the command officers and extending an additional 1% to the Police Officers Association of Michigan. And I'm pretty sure Deputy Roth would say that if you offered them an additional 1%, they're not gonna say no. Okay.
I would, I would move that we make that offer. I get a second?
I will second that.
Why don't we ask for like a five or 10-minute break so Jody can put this together? So, yeah, we need to take a small break.
Let's take a recess till 11:30. Thank you. Okay. We left off, and Jody provided us with some information. They have one and two motions to sub.
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what these say, Mr. Chair, if I can talk for a second. But just talking with Jody, she said that if what we need to do, or I should make a motion, okay, to put a budget together for the 3% increase for county employees, regular county employees, and for the union employees that are asking for 1 and 1%, 1 and 1, 2%, effort to put together that budget and see if the numbers will work. And I would like to make that motion and not pass either one of these today and see where the numbers are.
And put it on in two weeks for this right here.
Pretty quick. From what I understand, is that correct, Jody? When does it have to be done?
So I certainly, this is already what I'm working on. And I'll be honest, those are the numbers I've already thrown out to my department heads to start working on because I had to start somewhere. So they will have their sheets back to me probably Tuesday at the latest for all the departments. And then I'll have that big picture of the general fund for you, because it is always the 101, the general fund, where we spend all that money out of, where it's a scratch the head question mark of robbing Peter to pay Paul.
So our owner employees are asking for 10%. We're gonna counter them at 3%.
Basically.
Okay. And the EOMA, I think I got the right acronym.
Sheriff Unions.
Okay, the Sheriff Union. Okay. They're, they're asking for the 1% plus 1%, so they're asking for two. That's, and you, and you're gonna put together those numbers for us and get them back to us as soon as possible. See if we, see if we can, we can budget for it.
Correct.
I second this motion.
They are instructing the county controller to prepare the 2024 budget with the assumptions of a 3% cost of living increase for non-union and additional 1% increase for union employees.
I like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It, it would be wise. I think it's considerate. We should take in consideration with Mr., Eric Shep. I think we should wait two weeks or the chairman, the chairman can always hold a special meeting pertaining just to this. Matter of fact, that might be something that the chairman might.
Okay. So all the information I have is depending on my peeps in the department.
So.
Whenever, whenever it comes in.
So they, I have to be able to gather the information from the elected officials and department heads, because clearly we don't know what their expenses are.
And I'm not gonna push her to do this, so in two weeks, we can do it.
I will, I will bend to the collectivism of this, this group, and I will, we take a.
These are our, these are our people. They're Jody's peeps too, but I mean, the sheriffs are our people too.
They're all our people.
At the end of the day, this is the most important job we're gonna do all year.
Yes.
We need to wait. I'm fine with waiting.
So what we can do is your next meeting is October 12 after this. That actually gives us a good chunk of time. Commissioner Russo and Commissioner Ostergrun, you sit on Budget and Finance with me. Like you guys. So we have scheduled already on Thursday, October 5, time to be determined by you, a Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, that's bad for me.
Okay, we have.
I had to get a special court order to go to Canada.
Okay. When will you be available?
Before that, I'll be available on the second or third.
Perhaps someone else will have to sit in for me.
Perhaps. And I will email you if your email works up there to include.
If you can, I'll get.
Yeah, I just need an alternative.
Yeah, he's my vice chair. He can sit.
We can sit down and look at what happens once we put everything together and see, okay, if we pull A to B, will it work before sending it out to the entirety of the board?
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
So in two weeks.
Budget and Finance Committee, anyhow.
We have a motion, Eric, seconded by Rex. Is there any more discussion on that?
Yes, I understand fishing's a big issue.
Michelle, can you call for?
Michelle, can you call for a vote, please?
What, what, what are we voting on now, Mr.?
This is the motion, put it off for two weeks.
Yeah.
I can't, you, you're the chairman. In my opinion, you can just. My affirmation.
Would you like Michelle to reread the motion? It's a lovely motion.
I don't really think we need a motion. You, you, you're deciding with the consent of the board that we're not. I'm fine with your affirmation.
Okay, so in two weeks.
I think, and I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. I think it would show really good faith to the employees if you did put this in a form of a.
Yeah.
I, I will, I will bend to the.
The interruptions of the controller.
The collective wisdom of this, of this board and do a motion. Say a sort of by the, by the madam controller.
Michelle, can you call roll, please?
It's never easy.
You haven't read the motion.
I don't even know.
She hasn't read the motion yet. She's got to read the motion.
Who says other counties say we screwed up?
Roscommon County Board of Commissioners instructed the controller to prepare the 2024 budget with a 3% increase for non-union employees and an additional 1% above for POAM/COAM contract.
Yeah, you made the motion. It was seconded by Rex. We had a discussion.
Yeah, and that's, and Jody is going to get the, put the numbers together for that for us.
Yes.
Okay, I, I caught all the rate numbers for the other, but I didn't know that they.
Preparing the 2024 budget.
Yes.
With an increase, a 3% increase for non-union employees and an additional 1% increase.
I move what she said.
Above. POAM/COAM contract.
Okay, we had discussion. Can you call roll, please?
I don't know.
Spencer.
Yes.
Melbourne.
The whole heart, yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson. Ostrick.
Yes.
Okay, number 15, the German.
No, too many.
I thought we did public comment.
Committee reports. Thirteen.
We, I thought we did committee reports.
No, we haven't done committee reports.
Okay.
Business, that was the part we skipped.
Okay, I apologize. I thought we did committee reports. Okay, you want to start, Eric?
I have no committee reports, Mr. Chair.
The COA has appointed an interim director, Deborah Looney. As the interim director of the Commission and Agency. And a meeting occurred last week. I attended the Action Agency up in Traverse City. I took the whole pamphlet and executive director's report. The highlights for the landmark group of LLC is making a four-unit apartment project in Calcasas. And the Action Agency is, is beginning a new database serving all customers through a single point entry base. What that really means, I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, but that's what they said. And I did ask Harry Bachman to be here on October 11th, be able to give us a review of Action Agency's report. I did, I did attend the Roscommon County Jail's ministries and it was a delightful evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The packet I'll leave on the desk.
I attended the animal control on the 14th. We talked about millage wording as their millage is up for renewal again. We also talked about how they could possibly be more proactive on social media and showing the different types of grants that they've applied for and what those grants have gone to paying for or helping pay for. We talked about the McCosta County Animal Shelter and they wanted us to consider possibly taking in if needed any of their animals as some things are going on over there in construction and getting a new animal shelter up and going. She talked about the annual shock clinic, which will be at the shelter from nine to three on November 4th, January 27th, and February 18th. They've applied for the spay and neuter grant of 10,000 that is still pending. They've received grants to help with live traps, trail cameras. They received a trailer grant and the, the M-Dard vaccine grant. Their officers will also be train, attending a training for animal cruelty, which has increased since 2022. I also was on Zoom for the materials management meeting on the 20th and how to help prepare for this new plan with solid waste and recycling. There's still a lot unknown on what we have to do and they are monthly meetings that are going to try to help us sort out exactly what needs to be done. And then I had the lake level committee talks with Rex. He will expand a little bit further about the bid packet and things that we're looking on doing there.
Thank you.
I met with the county controller to go over millage ideas since it was, I was instructed to spearhead that by the chairman. I went to Richfield Township meeting. They've just finally put in a program to deal with the milfoil in the lake and invasive species. And that was good to see. And at the end of the meeting, I answered a lot of questions to residents about assessment district and possible apportionment situations. I had a hazardous waste meeting. And we went over the surveys that people turned in from, from attending there. And the survey brought, broke down what township they were from and any suggestions they might have. We also talked about the idea of instead of doing surveys to be filled out by people attending to changing it to someone comes, approaches the car as it enters and gathering that information to speed up the lines. Because sometimes when they're busy, people get backed up and, you know, the faster we move them forth through, they're happier they are. And so we talked about that. As Commissioner Sencer said, we had a meeting. We reviewed what was to be placed in the ads for a delegated authority and checked that and seemed to, to our liking and authorized that to be done. And then I missed the Asabo Township meeting because of prior engagements.
Thank you, Rex. I had an agenda meeting and we had the special meeting. Public comment, number 14.
Can I back up them?
Yeah.
Also, Commissioner Sencer and I, not that we expect any big talk on it today, but in the very near future, we'd like to see talk on it. We think it's time to apply for a permit to make improvements on the Higgins Lake Dam so we can try and control the lake levels better. And at this point, our suggestion is probably let's look at both a permit to put in a restrictor plate so we can actually accomplish something. That's to be discussed by the board as a whole and decide which direction we want to go. I think we need to do that in the, in the future. It's not, you know, it's too late to get anything done this year, but we need to move on this.
Thank you, Rex. Public comment, number 14. Yes, Michelle.
She does time herself. I want you guys to know that. She's very fair.
So as Commissioner Ostrick asked earlier, so yes, the, I was going to tell you this, is that at the conference I was at last week, our lobbyists did indicate that the legislature is looking at adjourning November 9th to put all of these in place. So currently I had Core. They have submitted millage wording for the February election. I know that there are. There's at least one other township. There's one township that I know that is also considering millage language for February as well. So I just wanted to make sure and I, you guys are all on ball, are on the ball with this and since we've already discussed a little bit earlier, that December 5th is your deadline to have millage wording in for anything that you're going to put, if you're going to put something on there. And if the county puts something on the ballot, then the county covers the cost for the proposal only ballot because we'll have to provide three different ballot styles. There will be the Republican, the Democratic, and then the proposal only because some people only want to vote the proposals. They don't want to vote on the candidates if there's those ballots. And if the county does not put anything on, then any of the entities that have millages on the ballots, then those costs will be sorted out for them. But other than that, all of the presidential primary expenses that are not local related are covered by Presidential Primary Fund. So there, we do save some money on that election. So. About that.
Was it done that way in the past?
The presidential elections?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a special.
There's really no difference. It's just.
No, the only difference will be that there's the early voting, which the early voting expenses will also be covered for the presidential primary election by that fund. But come August and November of next year, the townships will have to cover that and our larger expenses will go into place there. So as I'm trying to figure all of that stuff in with my budget stuff for next year, which is kind of hard to predict. I know there was something else, but it's been so long since I thought about it. So I'll just wait till I think about it again. Thank you.
My name's Jeffrey Max Lavoy. I'm from Emery Road. I'm representing the people of Emery Road. We have a, we actually have a committee that we have of seven to eight people sometimes. And we meet together and we are representing the Emery Road Project with Consumers Energy. Last time I was here, we presented it to you and you, you know, we, we were discussing and didn't know much about it, but we know that something about it this morning. We thank Consumers Energy for coming and clearing some stuff up with you. As, as the, I guess I'm the spokesman since I started the petition. We are, we are proposing that the, the county will help us out. And let's move, since there is an alternate route due through state land, which will not affect any property owners at all. We would, we'd like the county commission to, to help us out. We ask the township, county, township commission to help us out. And there's, they're, they're thinking about it too. I have, I have now over 68 people. I have received a complete property who owns every piece of property on Emery Road from Old 27 to Reserve. And there's a lot of property that's owned by people that don't live here. My neighbor's actually lives in New York. And we, I am, I'm taking writing to each one of them and asking them about this project. And having them, this is the, pretty much majority of Emery Road does not want this. We are not against consumers upgrading at all. We want them to upgrade. We want them, you know, I wish they would have upgraded some of their old extension lines from years ago. It's called preventative maintenance. That's what I used to do for a living. But I, what I'm asking is we would like your support, the people, the taxpayers, the homeowners of Emery Road would like your support to divert this line through state land instead of down through property owners because it will destroy a lot of people. And there's a lot of health issues. Not only just from the lines they're afraid of, but there's a lot of health issues that's worried about this. They're losing sleep because of this line coming through. A lot of these people have been there for years. I've only been there six years. I'm, but, you know, there, as long as there, I understand, but as long as there's an alternate route, it might be a little bit more expensive, but it will get more expensive because nobody that's signed this petition is going to give in. And we have, we, we have a meeting coming up in October with everybody that will, that signed the petition. We're sending out flyers. We're calling people and they're, we're going to meet and we're meeting with a lawyer who can tell us what we need to do. It gets to that point. We do not want it to get to a point where everybody has to go to lawyers. I think between township and the county, we can save Emery Road. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
No.
I like, I'm asking the chair a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is it possible in support these folks on Emery Road for us to put together a resolution in support of what they're trying to do? So let, send them a letter and or, or even pass a resolution that would be a little bit stronger in support of folks on Emery Road. Is that, is that something that we can do? Okay, thank, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Township, township is, is going to be in the courts. And we're going to meet with them again. Township was thinking.
Thank you. Is there any other public? Number 15.
So move, Mr. Chair.